Russo.
That's a beautiful one to follow. I'm Joseph Russo, One Harbor Slanting Drive, Pecosa. I'm sure everyone knows we have the Anna's Pizza in Pecosa. We've been longtime residents also. We've been paying taxes for a long time. And we try to support the community with everything that's asked of us. And we've been trying to sell this piece of property for quite a few years now. And these gentlemen have come up, one of the first ones to come up and have interest in it. And I was concerned about how something like that would look and everything, but everything I've seen and what they've promised, it's going to be a beautiful building. You know, Ms. Libby might not like it, and I'm sorry for that. And there might be some citizens that don't. But when you pay taxes over years and years, and I'm getting to the age now where there's health issues going on, and I can't wait another 10 years. I recommend, and I, first of all, I forgot to say, I appreciate all y'all here tonight. And you guys do a wonderful job. But I would like to get this sold and approve this project. And it's a needed thing. It's going to add plenty of tax revenue to the city. Where our citizens won't have to pay as much. Maybe they could hold it off a couple of years, real estate taxes or other taxes. But this is a need in this community. It's climate controlled. We can store plenty of things in there that won't get ruined in these non-climate controlled units. And I'm sure that they will do what they can to make sure it pleases everybody. And I thank you for listening. And if you have any questions for me, or I'm sure they'll be standing up in a minute, you can ask them. Right? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russo. Uh, Tim Trant.
Very seldom I taller than the speakers that precede me. Mr. Mayor, members of council, councillor, madam clerk, madam assistant manager. It's my privilege to be here tonight on behalf of the applicant. My name is Tim Trant. I'm attorney with Kaufman and Canelo, also resident of the city, 837 Pecosa Avenue. Just to introduce the team tonight, in case I don't know the answers and need to refer questions to other people, is Whitney Graham, who is the owner of Graham Real Estate, a native of Hampton Roads, develops his projects here in Hampton Roads. His contractor, Matt Hustin, who's with Elevate Contractors, the owner of Elevate Contractors, also a native of Pecosa. Bob Thornton and Antonio Tedesco are the real estate professionals working on the transaction. And last, but certainly not last, uh, South Hall Russo, who's sitting beside his younger brother, how he's called Joe. In any event, if you need to answer, questions answered that I can't, those are folks that we may refer to. First and foremost, I want to thank staff, Thomas in particular, as well as Wiley. They're very rigorous in their review of the application, but very kind, very respectful, very efficient, very persistent communication and communicating with us about the things they wanted, things they needed, timelines, conditions, all that sort of thing. Just, it was very professional, and we appreciate the opportunity to work with them, how they handled us in the process. I know we saw the list of conditions there, and sometimes there can be some push and pull on that. We are in complete agreement with the conditions that are proposed and appreciate, you know, the opportunity to work through those with staff. I will not be redundant of Thomas's presentation. He stole a lot of my thunder. But in the interest of time, I'll just highlight a couple of things supplemental to that. First and foremost is, the plan that is before you, and maybe take one issue with the presentation, does differ from ordinance requirements in one very meaningful way, and that is the landscaping. It exceeds ordinance requirements. It's in jest. But we certainly heard the concerns of the planning commission and Ms. Grable at being one of the planning commissioners about the mass of the building and wanting, you know, being concerned about the character of the corridor. And beauty's in the eye of the beholder. As a resident drives that quarter every day, I think it's going to be one of the more attractive, if we were fortunate enough to get approval, one of the more attractive buildings in the With Creek Quarter, but that's just my personal opinion. But we definitely heard the concern of aesthetics and the massing of that building. And fundamentally enhanced beyond ordinance standards, our landscaping proposed in front of the building in multiple layers, alternating trees and shrubs, and along the sides of the building. And that's all new and supplemental and more than the ordinance, base ordinance requirements to break up the mass of that building and further enhance the aesthetics of the experience of the person that would drive by, the citizen that would drive by on With Creek Road. And then last, but not least, Mr. Canelo had raised with us some concerns about the signage and particularly the self-storage component just being read and loud and supplemental and asked, you know, whether, as did council members, whether that, how important that was. I took that back to Mr. Graham and, you know, in a very snap decision said, "Look, we'll take it off, get rid of it," you know, and had his architect jump through his hat to produce new elevations for y'all this evening to remove that signage to help again further be responsive to the city's interest and improve the aesthetics. So I won't babble on anymore, but just stop there and answer any questions that you may have.
Yep, your turn.
Tim, can you talk about the parking and easement that Ms. Libby brought up?
Sure. I have not done the title review. I would respectfully submit those are private property rights issues resolved between developers and property owners all the time. I wouldn't see those as being part of the conditional use permit process, but to the extent that it's of interest to council, I did ask Mr. Graham about that. He has reviewed the title very carefully. Does a lot of this development very good, and is confident that those easements do not impact the placement of the building. And are located on adjacent property. If they are located on his property, it doesn't impact the building footprint. And if he has to make any adjustments to that footprint to accommodate those, he's certainly prepared to do it. But he's confident from his perspective and his review of the title that they don't impact his proposal.
She also had brought up a parking requirement. Do you or maybe one of your group are able to address that?
Sure. So the parking spaces that are shown on this plan, I believe, meet the, we do receive the specifications for parking for this use under the city's ordinance. And Ms. Grable was right. Different uses have different parking requirements. You know, a fast food restaurant, for example, will have more parking needs on a, you know, hour-by-hour, day-by-day basis than something like a self-storage facility where people tend to come one time, drop their stuff off, and they don't come back very often. At least if Mr. Graham's business plan works, they keep their stuff there for a long time. I'm teasing, but the short answer is, we are happy with the parking that's shown, but by industry standards, it's overparked. There is more parking on this site than is needed based on the experience of Mr. Graham and his operation of other similar facilities.
I have a question that I started to ask Thomas about. Is this the optimum size? If you had to develop a storage facility with controlled, climate controlled, this be it, or would it be bigger?
Smaller.
Higher? What would be the optimum? You're kind of sandwiched into the space you have, but if space was not a consideration, would this be the same building that would?
Sure. So I was talking with Mr. Graham about an anticipation, because you gave me a heads-up that you might ask this question when you were speaking during the public, you know, during the board or council review session. So there's not necessarily an optimum building size, you know, sort of universally applicable to every market. It's really different market to market. So what Mr. Graham attempts to do without divulging all of his proprietary secrets is, you know, look at what the demand for storage is, and they have ways of predicting that. You know, a lot of people in transition to proximity to military bases, new housing, demographic data, younger families, that type of thing, all drives in their business model, the demand for storage. And they can come up with, you know, a rough estimate of the market demand by number of square feet of available storage in a market area by resident or by person. And the market standard in, kind of in Hampton Roads is really around 13 square feet per person. And our estimates are the market is substantially below that in the Pecosa area, like three to four square feet per person. So you want to program your building to try to address that market area, that market demand. You don't want it to be, you don't want to size it to assume all of the market demand, right? Because then, you know, you may overbuild, and that's a bad thing. There may be other market forces that will affect that. For example, existing facilities with expansion rights or seeking to expand. So you don't want to just, you know, run out your, you know, the existing storage facilities either. So what I'm explaining to you, sorry, in a roundabout way, I should be more succinct, is it's not an A plus B. It's a multi-variable equation to sort of arrive at how you size these buildings. And yes, you are constrained, as you say, by the property that's available and what the ordinances will allow. So this is on the smaller scale of storage facilities. It's not abnormally small, but you know, in a range of new climate-controlled storage facilities, you would typically see something, you know, in excess of 100,000 square feet, slightly larger. But for Pecosa, the scale of Pecosa and the market area, we feel that this is the optimum size for a new climate-controlled stuff, storage facility in this market.
I don't want to give you the answer, but I was just wondering if there was more benefits to be, like three stories versus two because of HVAC considerations, considering these are climate controlled. If we were to say, no, you can have a two-story, one, pack your bags and leave town, or you go wait.
Fair question. And I'm sorry, so asking, you know, what, if the question were, and I'm not saying this is what you're asking, you know, what is the smallest building that you would be willing to do? It's not much smaller than what's proposed. It would be financially feasible to pay fair value for the land, build the building, and have a good operating model with material, smaller space. A two-story building would not be financially feasible for Mr. Graham. We would not proceed with the project. It would need to have that additional square footage in order to make it a financially viable project.
I appreciate your addressing the signage thing, because that was my question for was the fact that, having seen buildings like the ones that are in these photographs here, and having driven through York County and Gloucester County and down to Virginia Beach on very, very wide roads, five lanes in each direction, at 55 mile an hour or so, that you almost need something up high. But With Creek Road is not that. You know, it's two lanes in each direction, turning in the middle at 35 mile an hour, hopefully. And, you know, people are, you know, my feeling is that someone was looking for storage facility. I asked my wife, "What'd you, what would you do?" She goes, "Well, I'd go on the internet." Exactly. Find where the storage facility is. How would you get there? GPS. But you really don't need that sign at the top of the building, lowering down on you with, and you moved it down a little bit, made it a little smaller, and got rid of the one. So thank you for that.
And you should thank Mr. Canelo. He did not give you away.
Okay. And all the doors and windows are basically on the front with, like, some on the side, so there's nothing facing out the back, not for, you know, freezed development in the city or if you aren't.
And there may be, you know, some code requirements for emergency egress, but no, there's no functional areas of the building out the back.
Yeah. Excuse me, Mr. Trant. I really appreciate the fact that the company is willing to, the conditions set forth so forth, and that you've made a building that looks nice, okay? And you've agreed to the fact that it's going to look as presented in the elevations, okay? I also appreciate the fact that you added the green spaces that you did so that it doesn't look like some of the pictures that Ms. Grable presented, okay? And I was going to ask a question about the parking, but that's already been answered, okay? And I thought I heard her say that the building was going to settle on an existing easement that wasn't necessarily set for the purpose of the building. Can you, is it going to be settling on somebody's easement or is it for another purpose?
We do not believe so, Mr. Southall. I have not personally reviewed the title, but Mr. Graham has, and he assured me that it is, it is, it is his belief that that easement does not impact the placement of our building.
Thomas, can you talk to that?
Councilman Southall, yeah, I think the applicant, you know, is right in saying that, you know, generally that would be found in a private title search, and if there was cause for concern, we'd more than likely hear it from them first. So that being the case, I think the applicant, what he reflected is accurate.
I just want to clarify that, because I was going to ask Thomas too. So would, there would be something that would prevent him from building?
If a plan came to us that, for the building on top of an easement that someone else has access to, it wouldn't fly through our process.
Okay.
And for what it's worth, Ms. Andrews, Andrew Southall, we wouldn't get a lender to loan money to build the building if there were title issues. The adjacent property owner would have a right to sue us. I mean, we wouldn't proceed to build a building that couldn't, you know, that somebody could force us to tear down or relocate or claim damages. So, but we don't think that's likely to be the case. If it were, there are other private property rights stops that prohibit that. We hopefully would never get to Mr. Canelo having to be the bad guy, the referee in that.
Okay.
Gordon?
Yes.
If I may, can I call on our city attorney, Mr. Wayne Moore, to state for the record his legal opinion about?
Anything about the title. But I will tell you that they cannot violate other people's property rights. No matter what you do tonight, you can't authorize them to violate anybody else's property rights. Whatever easements are on the property are on the property. Their title will show that. And I will promise you, no title company is going to guarantee it, and no bank's going to loan money on it if there's a problem quoting on easement or quoting on somebody else's property.
Thank you for that, Wayne.
I'm good.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Trant? Okay. Tim, thank you. Want to ask him another question? Oh, sure.
So there was, talk about the parking spaces.
Sure.
What determines the number of parking spaces?
Is it used, like, for example, if there's a medical, probably somebody would there, there could be more parking spaces required?
So, sorry to interrupt you, ma'am. But you're, you're right. Parking is determined by use, and obviously, some uses would warrant more parking requirements than others. I can tell you that this one, I'm not going to, I won't do a math night for you unless you want me to, but the requirement would be one spot for 50 to 100 units. You could go on the 50-unit side of that or the 100-unit side of that. Then, of course, there's parking requirements per staffing. And for either one of those scenarios, whether we required one spot per 50 units or one spot for 10 units, with the amount of units proposed and the staffing, the application does exceed the parking requirements for either scenario.
Okay. All right. Let's move on. Mr. Russo, Sal.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. I'm Salvatore Russo, live at 25 Ferguson Street, Joe's older brother. But anyway, I just want to say, we purchased this property about 20 years ago, paying taxes. We've looked at other things. At one point, we were going to move the restaurant over, but the economy and just things didn't line up the way they were. We have had some other inquiries, but nothing that has gone as far as we are now. So I don't want to sound redundant or whatever, but just to let you know that we would appreciate it if y'all would approve this. This is a great city. It's, we think this will be an asset to the community. Not only will it raise revenue on this particular property, but it will raise the values on adjoining properties. And we could all use some more money, I think. But anyway, I thank you for your time and your service, and with that, I would appreciate y'all's approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Sal. Ms. Barney?
There's not much need really for me to speak on this now, because Libby did a pretty good job, but.
Barney, can you put the mic down?
Okay. One thing, when we were reviewing this, one thing came to my mind. We had an application on this sometime pre-2004, come before the planning commission. And it hit me that night. It was several things that were red flags on this property. Mr. Kiotis purchased it in 1987, and he used this front piece, which is prime real estate, of course. I think anybody that looks at it would think it's one of the few parcels that's not been developed on that road, on that end. We had an application come forward, and I thought that night when we were listening to the presentation, I couldn't remember exactly who it was, couldn't remember exactly the details of it, but I know that it did not fly because of some conditions that were on that property. So I checked with a former planner. The former planner informed me that they also recalled it, and it had a large, larger easement for the sewer, because he ran the sewer back to the townhomes that he developed on the back portion. And my concern is somewhat about the conditions of the easements, but I'm also puzzled. I mean, he held it for 17 years and didn't do anything. He was a developer. He held it for that long, didn't do anything with that front piece. Kind of made me a little suspicious. And of course, the present owners have owned it for about 17, and it's nothing been done with it. So I would, my encouragement is, when we reviewed it, we had no mention of anything, any of these easements and things, and we could not see the plat very clearly. So that's what kind of made me do a little bit of research on the back of it. I would say to be very careful because of that, and of course, Mr. Moore is exactly right. And I know that that is the, what he's given you, that knowledge is certainly the truth. But, I mean, I'm thinking in terms of protection of the people who are in those townhomes. I certainly wouldn't want anything to be jeopardized with their sewer and the maintenance of that. And it is, it is a wide area there. I think it's 15, 15 feet ingress and egress, and it says, "And utilities." I think drainage utilities. I was a little concerned about that. Normally, in presentations in the past, we have had a little more detail on it, and it was difficult to see. I'm certainly not, I'm not opposed to developing it. I'd like to have seen it out here across the street, because that's a better place for it, on the city-owned property, really. It would have been more, for that size building, the building is, I call it a maxi storage because it is. It's not a mini storage. It's, it's quite a big, big building there, when you think of it. And I'm not opposed to it. I'd like to see something on that lot. I said that that night. I would like to see something on it. I don't, I think it, I think it's a little large for that particular parcel. And it may be that they get in there and they do find they have some problems. I hope not, but if they do, I mean, I would have suggested that you postpone it and do some, do a little research on it. I think, I think it may, and research what was the application that was submitted. I can't remember who it was, and the planner couldn't, but we both agreed that we did remember it, and it was probably when Mr. Hollandsworth was here as the, as the planner. But it was something about it that prohibited, and I don't know whether it was financially prohibited it. Mr. Trant did a great job in expressing and telling you about it and informing you of it. I do, I did ask him, was there any room for a little bit of give on their take as to size, because I do think it is large, a large building for that small, really small acreage. So, and, and I know, I'm well-versed in the, in the comprehensive plan. I've seen a few. It is a guide, I realize that. It's not something, it's not a bible that you have to go by. It's a guide. I'm very keenly aware of that. But I think it's wise to, I was a little surprised at the architectural review board that they passed it, but I think it's wise to consider, to consider the comments that have been made here tonight before you decide to vote for it. I think you should consider it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Barney. Mr. Graham, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but is there anything that you'd like to say? Something I'd like to hear from you since you're there.
Hi, my name is Whitney Graham. I'm with Graham Real Estate, 1904 Twinko Road, Virginia Beach. So when I first put the property under contract, and it has been, I've had it under contract for quite a while, it's probably February that I put it under contract, we had the title search done, and Kyle Cortez, my attorney, who handles the transaction side, Mr. Trant's handling the land use side, he reviewed the title, and we have a title commitment, and we, so my, if my memory is correct, there is an easement, but it's to the right of the property. There's a strip. You can see a strip there that is actually, if I could walk up. But you'll see, there's two parcels right here, and then there's, if you move up to, there's that strip right there. I believe that is the sewer easement that goes to the apartments behind there, and that is, you know, for the benefit of that property. I would not be here today if there was an easement in the middle of that property, because even if you rezone it tonight and there's an easement in the middle of it, I'm not going to be building on it, because I can't get a loan, I can't build. You did a great job explaining how an easement works. Been 55 years, I know. He knew a little bit about it. He's exactly right. So, you know, there's, there's not an easement in the middle of the property.
Mr. Graham, is it fair to say that your attorney, if there was an easement, he would not propose you moving forward with making the offer on the property?
That is exactly right. And I've spent a lot of money since, you know, we had title work done and gotten, got a title commitment, spent a great deal of money to get to this point, and I'm not really keen on throwing money out the window.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Graham. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
I will let you, I will let you speak again. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And I appreciate what Mr. Graham has said, and I am going to give these two documents to Wayne, because I think it would be important.
I'm going to look at those documents and give a legal opinion? My opinion doesn't mean anything to what these gentlemen do, or what city council does, as I said, they cannot change the legality and the ownership of that title on what they do tonight.
Okay. Well, what I would just like to address you back to is the plat that I, on top of it says, "Fraught to APIF." And I believe, and I could be wrong, and I am not a title examiner, but I believe that this red piece that you see is actually the piece that you're looking at that's 18.8 foot wide by the depth that is adjacent to the post office, and that is the strip, and that is not the strip that the easements are on. So I'm not sure about your title examiner and what they discovered or how they discovered it, and I could be wrong. But by looking at that and looking at this plat and looking at the plat that Mr. Russo got, he got it, it clearly shows that there is a 15-foot easement that is approximately, I would say, at least 35 feet to 40 feet from the right-hand side of the property. And that's what this, that's what this plat indicates. I'm not, you know, I didn't make this up. These are plats that were put to record, one of them in 1998, and the other one in 2004, when Mr. Russo bought it. So I would encourage you, I think that more, it warrants a little bit more investigation before this council votes on this. As I said, it's a massive building, as Bonnie said, it's a maxi building. This, as I said, is a massive building, as Bonnie said, it's a maxi building. There are a lot of places in Pecosin. We have an EDA that I, that works with this type of, of, of businesses that want to locate here. That's one of the things that EDA does, trying to get businesses into their, into the area, normally in the areas that they've designated for this type of structure. And again, I think this structure is more, it is more in keeping with an industrial look, and I don't believe the City of Pecosin residents are going to appreciate seeing that building sitting there. So I would strongly encourage y'all to do a little bit of investigation. I'm not disputing his title examiner, but I think that anyone can look at these two plats and see that both of them represent that perhaps that is 40 feet off the property, at least 30 to 40 feet from the right property line. So I would just ask that y'all reconsider before you vote, and let citizens also speak since this is not a by right proposition here. This is a use permit that they are requesting, and I just don't think that the use is, the building is appropriate for, for that particular spot. I think there are more, there are areas in Pecosin that are better suited. I think it's a better suited building that is off the highway where it's not up in your face, like some that I've showed you earlier. So I would just strongly ask you to please postpone your vote, do a little bit more investigation, study these plats, have the planning department take a look at these plats, and make some determinations of their own as well. So with that, I'll thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, Libby.
Okay. Any other questions of anybody?
When was the last time a new building, commercial building was built in Pecosin?
I'm going off memory that may not be all that distant, Councilman Fie. I, I would, I would imagine that it would have been the Cool Wave Car Wash was probably the most recently built commercial building in the city, but that's speculation, and I've not done any professional research on that.
Wouldn't it be the CVS? Wouldn't it be the CVS?
CVS is new.
I was going to say, well, CVS merely replaced another building.
It's certainly larger, but.
Maybe larger. Just like.
From a vacant parcel, I would say the car wash, but new building, definitely CVS.
The Wendy's, but it too replaced another building that was roughly the same size.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? Is there a motion?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move that we adopt a resolution to approve a conditional use permit for the operation of a mini storage warehouse to be located in Actimat Parcels 18-1-103 and 18-1-104, Wood Creek Road, Zone B2 Business Commercial.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right. We have a motion made, second we adopt the resolutions. Any other questions, concerns, comments?
This is our time for comments, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I haven't talked to anybody on council. I have no idea how anybody's being tonight, which is how I like it because I think this is where the discussion should be and not before we get here. So I just had a couple of things I wanted to say because we did have some citizens speak, and I don't like just voting and giving a yes or a no and then nobody knowing why I give a yes or no, and this seems to be a really important issue to people. As far as the easement issues, that's not our job. It's clearly not our job to determine whether it's an easement or not. The title company is going to determine that. They're either going to get a loan or they're not. It's going to go before our city staff, who I trust would stop it at that point, wouldn't even get there. So I think the easement issue is a non-issue. The parking places, along with the number of stories and the way the building's built, completely complies with our ordinances. The only issue is whether, really, that in my view, is if we want to allow a storage unit or not a use that's normally allowed or not. That's really what's under consideration for us and planning, really. But to Ms. Moffett and. I, as a citizen outside of council, completely agree with every single thing that you said tonight. I've been on that side of the podium for the exact same reasons for other things in this city. If I had my way, the CVS wouldn't be there. I think that building is big. It doesn't fit with the small-town feel. I don't think the car wash does either personally. I think the big disconnect that we've had in this city for a very long time is that we've got this really great comprehensive plan that lays out, and we got lots of citizen input on what we want, citizens want this city to look like. The big disconnect, in my personal opinion, that we've always had is comprehensive plan and our ordinances and what's allowed. And that's the job of the Planning Commission, who has the power to change those ordinances, write new ones, send them to us to vote and change those. Personally, I don't think that Pecosin allows anything above a two-story building. I think our ordinances should be changed so that that's not allowed, and then we don't have to worry about having this issue. You know, we allowed Lexi to build four-story apartments and get an exception, which I wasn't on council then and I didn't vote for that, and I wouldn't have voted for that because I think four stories right on Victory Boulevard is not going to look good. So I think, and tonight was the night for citizens to speak, and we've also had this same issue before in the past where citizens, and I agree with your statement, I think there are a lot of citizens that are not, would not be happy with that building, the way it looks, the number of stories, but the issue is that those are all allowed by our ordinances, and if we want a small-town feel, I was recently in Williamsburg and I drove by a Walmart. I didn't even know it was a Walmart. It was the most beautiful Walmart I've ever seen because they have these amazing architectural standards that do that, and I think we need those, and I think we need our ordinances to align with our comprehensive plan. Unfortunately, they do not. And I tried to get the ordinances changed to not allow buildings over certain square footage after we had the big Walmart issue because I knew CVS was coming down the road when I was a citizen, and, you know, got no traction on that. So I agree with you guys that I would love to see our entryway there be the small-town feel and look like some of these cities in Williamsburg and Richmond where all the architectural standards are the exact same. I absolutely would love that, but then we need to change our ordinances so that the car washes and the CVSs and the storage units cannot go in there. So that kind of is what I want tonight before I vote.
Okay. All right. I'm going to echo, and Tanya, I agree with everything you said, and when you brought the parts about the, if it was, I used to use the example of a pet store, but we got one now, so I use the example of a toy store. It was a toy store. This was a toy store. They wouldn't be here right now. They probably had started groundbreaking and ribbon cutting by now. So I, of course, as I do with most things, positives and negatives. The positives, warehouse be located what we call the Wood Creek Road Corridor or the comp plan. It'll provide a tax revenue. It may be of use by Pecosin citizens, but newer ones are probably living right over here in a few years. It should attract out-of-town consumers, though not likely necessarily recruiting ones, but they will come into the city, unlike where the Walmart was going to go. They'll come into the city, they'll hit the intersection, they'll hang a left, or they'll come south side and they'll go through the intersection, and they'll go, they'll basically see the entire business community of Pecosin in that one little turn-in, and there may be something that catches their attention. It may be go to Anna's for lunch. Luckily, hopefully, it's like that. So it will not be a traffic burden on Wood Creek Road. As far as the negatives, it really doesn't fully comply with the comprehensive plan. I look at this, read through it over and over and see like that. And there's several citizens' requests to deny the conditional use permit. However, we have individuals that own the property that are basically what people come to Pecosin for, for lunch, for dinner, that own a very nice restaurant that many, many times, and supporting them along the same line. So I'm with you. I still don't know how I'm going to vote until Kim calls my name.
We can find out in just a second.
Exactly. So, you know, all that's out there, so that's all I got.
David, do you have something?
Very briefly, Mr. Mayor, just for the record, a reminder, this conditional use permit was advertised in advance.
Well, that, that was one of my points too, David, is that tonight, if the citizens have the opportunity to come speak, and we've had the same thing happen with Legacy where citizens sort of found out at the last minute, and I feel for citizens on that too because I've also been on the other side of that, and, you know, it's not feasible when people have kids and jobs and everything to look at the agenda every two weeks and see, oh, what city talks about. Talk about. I get it. I didn't pay attention lots of times. Citizens just don't do that because they have lives, but this is the process, and this is the night where if citizens really did not want this, this was their opportunity to come speak.
We had nine citizens come and speak.
Which is more than we ever have.
Right.
Okay. Ms. Kim?
Councilwoman Andrews.
Been so long since you read the, the motion was to.
Move.
Aye.
Councilman Fie?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Mayor Hessel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
All right, thanks, Kim. Let's move on to new business. First item is a resolution adopting the 2022 Radiological Emergency Response Plan: Ingestion Exposure Pathways. Chief Bryant? How you doing, Mike? Good, good.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Parker, thank you for having me this evening. Tonight, I have another plan to bring to y'all. FEMA enacted the changes to the Radiological Emergency Program for jurisdictions residing within a 50-mile, 50 miles of the nuclear power plant, which in our case would be Surratt. Now, there's two bullets here that pretty much talks about this. This plan will enhance our radiological plan with protective actions and procedures, and the big part of it is, all jurisdictions must participate in the state-evaluated drill every eight years. So this is FEMA. They, the state of Virginia, Commonwealth of Virginia, decided they wanted to go with the FEMA program. So we do have a radiological plan that we have had for many years. This is going to enhance that plan, so that's pretty much what it is.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Any questions, Mike? It's pretty simple to me. When was the last time we had?
Last year, actually.
Last year.
That was, that was a state drill.
Okay.
This is, this is FEMA, so every eight years we'll have another drill.
Okay, good.
I accept motion for the resolution.
Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution.
Okay.
That would pass the Radiological Emergency Response Plan: Ingestion and Exposure Pathways.
Okay. All right. Most may second we adopt the resolution. All their concerns, comments, before we take the vote? If not, Ms. Kim?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Mayor Hessel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Thanks, Kim. Item two in the new business, a resolution concurring with the York County Board of Supervisors authorizing the county attorney to petition the circuit court pursuant to Code of Virginia 24.2-228.1B to refrain from ordering a special election by virtue of retirement and resignation of York Pecosin Sheriff J.D. Danny Diggs, and to approve Major Ronald Montgomery to serve as sheriff for the remainder of his term. We ought to walk right on through that, folks. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I make a move that we adopt a resolution concurring with the York County Board of Supervisors authorizing the county attorney to petition the circuit court pursuant to Code of Virginia 24.2-222.1B to refrain from ordering a special election by virtue of retirement and resignation of York Pecosin Sheriff J.D. Danny Diggs, and to approve Major Ronald Montgomery to serve as sheriff for the remainder of the term.
All right. Most may second we adopt that resolution. Are there any concerns, comments? Any concerns at all? If not, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Fie?
Aye.
Mayor Hessel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thanks, Kim. Item three is a resolution making an appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Someone have a name?
I move that we adopt a resolution making an appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals with the following name inserted, Micah Miller as an alternate, term will expire August 31st, 2020.
All right, thanks, buddy. There a second?
Second.
All right. Most may second we adopt the resolution with that name inserted. Concerns, comments?
I think it's excellent choice, sir.
I'm sorry?
I think it's excellent choice.
Oh, okay. All right, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Fie?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Mayor Hessel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Thanks, Kim. Last item on the new business is a resolution making an appointment to the Planning Commission.
I move that we adopt a resolution making an appointment to the Planning Commission, following name inserted, and I hope I pronounce his last name correctly, Stephen Geisinger?
Yes.
Hot Dog from the Central Precinct, whose term will expire November 30th, 2026, and that we also postpone his second appointment for the Central Precinct.
Okay. All right.
Seven.
All right. Most may second we adopt the resolution with that name inserted. Any concerns, comments, any questions? Ms. Kim, please.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Council, Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Fie?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Mayor Hessel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Yes. Currently, we have one unexpired vacant board seat for the Western Precinct for the school board. This item will be on the agenda at the January 23 meeting. If any citizen is interested in holding a seat on the school board or any other board, please go to our website, go to Boards and Commissions, and fill out a board bank application. The deadline for the application submitted for the, for the state of the school board will be due no later than January 9th. You can submit electronically, or you may turn in to my office in the city manager's office. If you have any questions, you can give us a call at, in the city manager's office at We're also taking applications for a central vacancy on the Planning Commission. If you would like to be considered for this position, please turn your application in to our office as soon as possible. And that's all we've got.
And interviews for the school board seat on the 23rd of week.
All right, thanks, Kim. Tanya, has she comments?
Absolutely. First of all, last month, I want to thank you for making the appropriation to increase the public safety salary. That was well taken by both police and fire, as well as the $2,000 retention award. We have issued that payroll, and we'll be handing that payment out to employees this week, so thank you for that. Also like to thank Mr. Canelo and Mr. Horton for the job on the conditional use permit. A lot of efforts has gone into those, both for the ambulance service as well as for the mini stores, so I thank them for that time taking it. Also like to thank Councilman Green for his years of service. This is, it's a, you know, a great honor to be up at the dais at the last meeting for Mr. Green, so thank you, and I want to thank him for, you know, putting up with me for that five years that he saw for me. Also, I wanted to announce that effective on Friday, the police department has placed all four school resource offices in locations. So if you recall back early July, you appropriated for the fourth, we have filled that position, so we are proud to say that each school is protected by a police officer at this point. But thank you for providing those resources. I'd also like to thank all city employees for the continued commitment and their service and dedication to the city. It takes a lot to continue to operate the city, so I thank you. And then I wish everybody a safe and Merry Christmas and a great start to 2023.
Thank you, ma'am. David?
Thank you, Gordon. I have no comments.
Okay, buddy.
I'd like to remind everybody that the Mobile Food Pantry will be December the 20th, I'd like to remind everybody that the mobile food pantry will be December the twentieth, that's Tuesday, from noon till one, uh, from ten to one at the Parks and Recreation Building, and it'll be hosted by the Presbyterian Church.
Great, great. Keith?
Yes, I'd like to apologize because I don't think we thanked enough at all at our last meeting, the Parks and Rec, or Parks and Rec or the Seafood Festival. They did an amazing job. I mean, after three years of not having it, I think they did a great job. Some things were forgotten, some things were added, so overall it was a beautiful event and great weather to boot and I kind of slighted them because I kind of feel partial to Parks and Rec after all those years on their advisory board, that they did a great job and thanks to Dallas and Gretchen and Taylor and, I'm going to forget the name, but they all did a great job. I mean, Seafood Fest was fantastic this year.
Okay, thank you. Perry?
Y'all wanted to comment on the, as well as Seafood Festival Keith mentioned, but the parade and the Christmas tree lighting just seemed to get bigger and bigger each year. And was it the Christmas tree lighting and the Frosty Festival out here just a few days ago, and there was at least five times the people. They used to be here when I'd take my granddaughter to sing in the middle school course. At least five times as many, so that is really a growing event. I've just figured up, I've been on council with you about seventeen years, Buddy, and we're going to miss you. And just wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
I agree with everything everybody said. I noticed too that last time I meant to say something about the Seafood Fest because it was so good and having all these community events, they're just all really great and I enjoy them so much and we are going to miss you, Buddy. It's been great serving with you and we have to decide who's going to take over the food pantry announcement. Since you won't be here to do this, we need to make sure we keep doing those every week.
I hope it's not like what I tell a lot of people, I'm going to miss you like a, I hope you'll miss me a little bit more.
We're going to have to practice reading resolutions.
We will. And two, I encourage people to apply for our school board position and our Planning Commission. And I also wanted to just say again, because I know the citizens are going to be watching this and I know for certain there's going to be a lot of people that are not happy about that storage building and, you know, as I said before, it, you know, wouldn't be probably my personal choice of what went there. I would too like it to be across from City Hall too, but then it would probably have to be triple the size in order to be able to build or that piece of land, then we'd have a storage building that was triple that size. So I would encourage citizens, I totally agree with our comprehensive plan, and encourage citizens to call our Planning Commission and encourage them to start changing our ordinances to match our comprehensive plan if we want our city to look like our comprehensive plan. That's really important. And wanted to thank everybody who did come out and speak tonight because even if we don't vote in agreement to what people talk about, it's important that we, that everybody gets to, everybody gets their opinion heard and I, and I do really appreciate people coming out and voicing their opinion on the matters that.
Buddy?
Yes, first off, I want to say I'm going to miss Buddy Green also. I don't know who I'm going to give my candy to anymore, okay? And I sincerely hope, I sincerely hope in the near future, okay, in the middle of a development somewhere, we'll be able to build a traffic circle so we can name it the Buddy Green Traffic Circle.
We could go counterclockwise.
I would also like to congratulate our city employees on their awards for their time in service and thank the citizens of Pecoson for paying attention to the city government I wish every citizen would, okay? It's very important, okay? Second, Jana's comments about please apply for the various commissions and boards for the city. This is the nicest city in the state of Virginia to live, probably the United States. If you want to keep it that way, you need to help keep it that way by working and supporting the various boards, okay? Those of us here now can't be here forever and nor should we be, okay? We need some fresh blood from people who have stake in this city and want to keep it this way. When we were having the debate relative to the storage facility and Jana made her comments, I wrote a little note to her panel here that said, thank you for your comments, because she's exactly right. And Councilman Fai made some comments and if you go to Williamsburg and you look at the 7-Eleven in Williamsburg, it doesn't look like the rest of the 7-Elevens anywhere in the state of Virginia, okay? And our comprehensive plan says the way we like for Pecoson to look, okay? And it's not like the storage building we just voted on, but we have a different set of criteria. And Jana was, Jana was right on those comments right off the bat. And so I encourage the Planning Commission to look at that and maybe we need to look at our ordinances and change them to reflect something that's similar to the comprehensive plan. So with that, I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year or a Happy Holiday, however you support it, and wish you the best.
Thank you, Buddy. Before we adjourn, Mr. Green, come here to the podium and Mr. Green as well.
Nobody's got a gun, do they? You can't get away.
Going to close this?
We are going to miss you, Buddy. We really are. We really are going to miss you. The city's going to miss you. Buddy stands here with me tonight, very humble man, I know that. Always involved, never asking for credit regarding the many good deeds that he has been associated with over many years of service to the citizens who reside here. Buddy served the city of Pecoson for over twenty-six years. That in and of itself is a tremendous accomplishment, but it doesn't stop there. From one giant step forward to another, this building we're assembled in bears Buddy's name on the dedication plaque, hangs in the hallway just beyond these chambers. Primary school, you'll find his name there as well. Two fire stations, you'll find his name there as well. The additions to the high school, the elementary and middle schools. If that's not enough, his name will appear on the dedication plaque that will be located in the new public safety building. For more than plaques in twenty-six years of service, Buddy's been an intent listener to the citizens of this community. If more governments, local, state, and federal, would do as Buddy has done over his tenure on city council, and that is to listen to those that we serve, this country would be far in better shape. I would be remiss if I did not comment about Buddy's generosity. Buddy also donates his city council salaries to those who have fallen on hard times within our community. Buddy, through his generosity, has paid many water bills, Virginia power bills. He's done that to keep services from being disconnected from these citizens. Buddy, along with his Pat wife, wife Pat, I'm sorry, have also coordinated the community food bank distribution every month for the past ten years. If I were to continue with more deserved accolades, we'd be here all night. Buddy Green's devotion to the city of Pecoson and to those who call Pecoson home has been exceptional, to say the least. His character is above reproach and his integrity is more than stellar. There is no plaque that can say how much this city will miss Buddy Green and his many acts of kindness and his devotion to the city government. Should anyone doubt any comments I've made here tonight, I would encourage you to stop for just a moment, consider where you live, and then compare our city to any other around us, and I believe that you will come to the same conclusion I have, that Pecoson is the place. To large thanks to Buddy Green. Buddy, let me say from a personal perspective, I will miss you tremendously. Your advice, your constant communication with me regarding many issues we face as a council has just been invaluable. Over your many years of service to this community, you have brought great credit, not only on yourself, but also to this entire community. On behalf of city government, Buddy, city staff, and on behalf of the citizens that we serve, well done, my friend. We pray God will continually bless you and your family and we pray that the wind will always be at your back. And with that said, on behalf of council, I'd like to present you with this, Buddy. I'd like to read it. Presented to Herbert R. Buddy Green in grateful appreciation of your many years of outstanding service to the city council for the city of Pecoson from January nineteen ninety-six to December two thousand seven and January two thousand ten, December twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. And I'll let you, if you want to.
Well, I hope one day I can live up to all these things that have been said about me because I'm certainly not there yet, but it's with a great deal of pride and honor that the citizens of Pecoson have chosen to elect me and I hope that I have served them well because I love this city and I tell you, we have got the best staff in the whole wide world and I just thank you very much.